We'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
We have seven present and zero absent, so we do have a quorum.
All right, next we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome everyone tonight to our meeting. It's nice to see a healthy crowd here. We appreciate that always. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Board members, you have the agenda in front of you. I have suggested that we add an item 10F in order to address some comments made by Board Member Richard Olson. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that addition at this time.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Now, this was a surprise upon me. I haven't talked my attorney on this.
Yes, well, let me apologize for the late notice of this. I only became aware of some comments that were made this Saturday. And so I spent, and I was out of town until late last night, so I spent today scrambling to try and get this item ready for this agenda. But I think, given the nature of the levy question coming up and some of the comments made, I thought it was important that we do address it tonight. So I apologize for the late notice to all the board members, but it was unfortunately unavoidable. All right, any further discussion?
Can I just clarify? I believe you said this is not for board action, it's just to...
There's no action to be taken tonight. It's sort of a report, so everyone is aware of what has taken place. Thank you. All right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
No.
All right, roll call, please. Mr. Clerk?
James Wolf.
Aye.
Jerry Robishaw.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
No.
Jason Ingraham.
Aye.
Deb Davis.
Aye.
Tom Casper.
Aye.
And I, Howard Bodie, vote aye. Mr. Chairman, the result is six-one in favor.
Motion carries, six-one. Next on the agenda, recognition and awards. First, we have the Lions Club of Faribault. Are they here tonight?
I don't think I saw anybody here for it, but I can summarize what...
Well, maybe you want to say just a few words about their donation.
You bet. And we just want to thank the Lions Club on their donation to all the third graders for the dictionaries. And they do this every year, and we thank them for that donation to the third graders.
So this has been going on. For those who don't know, the Lions Club has been making this donation for many years, as long as I've been on the board and watching the board. So we certainly appreciate their continuing commitment to our students. Next on the agenda is the Nyrstrand Charter School 2011-2012 Annual Report. I know we have some guests here for that.
Well, I just want to tell you what a privilege it is for me to be here. Some of you know me, others of you don't, but I was a first-year principal back when I was 32-years-old, just the other day, at Nyrstrand. Then I returned, that was in the '80s, then I returned to Nyrstrand in the '90s. And here I am again. And I feel so privileged to work with these families and with these kids. So we are delighted to be able to speak briefly about our annual report to you. With me this evening are our school ambassadors. These individuals help us with school tours. When we go to the International Peace Prize Festival at Ellsford College, these are the students who represent our school at that event. And I'm pleased to introduce to you tonight, and I can stand when I say their name, Nick Flom, no relation, Kalen Brotland, Kendra Kispert, Grace Gonzalez, Ruby Gernant, Ellie Glendy, and Lily Ruiz. They are all fourth and fifth graders at Nyrstrand School. So thank you, where's the notes? Okay, so, and you sit down. So, and I also want to thank Kathy for letting us know that our annual report is available electronically. So Drew is going to help us out with this. And our students will ever so briefly, but run you through our annual report with some highlights. So thank you. And Nick will start.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to tell you about our school, Nyrstrand Elementary. To help you in this sharing information about our school, we are going to highlight some items from our annual report. School enrollment, page four. We have 155 students attending our school. You might be interested to know that most of our students live in Faribault, in the Faribault School District, including the town of Nyrstrand. And most, and most years that amounts to between 85 and 90 percent of our students. Others come from Northfield, Kenyon, Lonsdale, Dennison, and Moorestown. Our enrollment over the last many years has always been around 155.
Governance and Management, page five. We have a board of directors that meets every month, just like you do. We have teachers, parents, and a community member on our board. Staffing, page seven. Many of our teachers and staff members have worked at our school for a long time, some as long as 25 years. And we also have some staff members who are new to our school this year. We feel very fortunate to work with adults who work so hard to help us learn and grow. Last year, the teachers at our school were trained in a program called Responsive Classroom. They learned ways to interact with us that reinforce good choices and guide us toward better ones. In each classroom, we have a morning meeting, where we do a variety of activities that develop a sense of community in our classrooms. These activities are fun, and we look forward to them.
Finances, page eight. Our school's business manager is Keith Johnson. He has been with our school for 13 years and is an ex-official member of our school board. Academic performances, page eight through 11. Overall, our assessment scores are above the state and national averages in both math and reading. In one area where our scores fell below the 85 percent proficiency level on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment is in the mathematics. But we were still well above the state average for grades three through five. We are very proud of our grade-five science proficiency score of 78.3 percent. The Minnesota State average was 57.9 percent, which means we exceeded it by 20 points. The state of Minnesota now assigns a multiple measurement rating, MMR, to schools in our state. Nyrstrand received the very high MMR of 98.42 percent. We achieve this score by having a high level of proficiency and growth among our students.
Non-academic Goals, page 11. We met all of our non-academic goals, including the responsive classroom approach and making and delivering blankets to the NICU unit at Children's Hospital in Minnesota.
Operational Performance, page 12. We have just begun our 14th year as a charter school. We appreciate that the Faribault School District served as our sponsor for 13 years. Even though you are no longer sponsoring our school, we appreciate the continuing, what? Continuing partnership we have with you. Food service, custodial service, and special education, and more. We are thankful for the care you take as our landlord in making sure the building is well-maintained and safe. There are some programs that are very unique to Nyrstrand School. Students are assigned to core classrooms, of course, but they are also assigned to multi-aged homerooms that meet four days a week. In each class, there are students in K through 5, and siblings are in homeroom together. In homeroom, we learn how to interact with and support each other as learners. The older kids and younger kids in our school take care of each other. We think homeroom helps to give our school a sense of family. We ambassadors are all members of Woodlands, grade four through 5, multi-age core classes. We remember how much we looked up to the older kids in our homerooms when we were much younger. And now we are the role models for our younger friends. We do a lot of service learning at Nyrstrand School. We enjoy reaching out to our community, and they reach out to us, too. Once a month, a homeroom hosts a community coffee at the end of the school day. In our community, and some parents, too, come for coffee and treats, and a great conversation. Community members also come to special events at our school, including concerts, plays, and celebrations. One very special event takes place every April, when we honor elders in our community by interviewing them and writing original songs about their lives. We call this event our community celebration.
Satisfaction Surveys, page 14. Overall, parents and students are very satisfied with their experiences at our school. For the first time, we used an online parent survey last year. Not as many parents participated as compared to previous years, so we hoped to increase participation again this year. We, students at Nyrstrand, love our school, and we feel we have great experiences there.
Innovative Surveys. Innovative Practices, page 15. Our service learning program allows students to be involved in special projects throughout the year. The students here tonight are members of the ambassadors. We also have students who give up their recess time to serve on the following committees and task forces: Peace Garden, Learn and Serve, School Spirit, and Behavior Plan Playground. In addition, we have students who arrive at school early to be a part of our work crew and school patrols. The work crew does tasks such as recycling and garbage collection, wiping walkers, and cleaning chalkboards and whiteboards. Work crew members help wipe tables in the lunchroom. We are proud of the way we take care of our building, and we try hard to keep it neat and clean. As we mentioned before, our teachers are now using the responsive classroom strategy in our classrooms. We enjoy the activities that they have brought to our day. Thanks to our PTO, we also have the opportunity to work on Study Island, an online program that reinforces math and reading skills. We can do this work both at our school and at home. We are very lucky to have a PTO that works so hard for us. They support us in so many ways at our school, and we appreciate all that they do. We enjoy our fundraisers, and our favorite one, of course, is the school carnival in the spring.
Future Plans, page 16. Our teachers and support staff members are continuing to learn more about responsive classroom, and we look forward to learning more about it, too. And even though our test scores are really quite good, we know that there is always room for improvement.
Board Training, page 17. All of our board members have participated in the training required by the Minnesota Department of Education.
Director's Professional Development Plan, page 17. As you know, our director during the 2011 and 2012 school year, Lauren Satrum, has returned to District 656 as a physical education teacher. We miss him very much, of course. Director's plan that appears in the annual report was achieved by Lauren Satrum.
And I have our closing page here, which I think I'll just read to you because we feel that we have a really important message of thanks and gratefulness to give to you tonight. So with gratefulness, we submit this final annual report to the School Board of District 656. Thank you for the support and encouragement you have given us as our sponsor over the past 13 years. While Nyrstrand Elementary School is a district in and of itself, we have always felt a part of the greater Faribault School District community. We look forward to a continued positive relationship with you as our landlord. We appreciate the support you demonstrate toward the success of our students through your ongoing care and concern for the upkeep and maintenance of the Nyrstrand Elementary School building. We appreciate your openness to our purchase of specific services, such as custodial, food service, technology support, and low-incidence special education consultation. And we hope to continue this positive relationship for many years to come. So, thank you. And we would entertain questions, either for me or for any of the students, if you have some.
Well, let me just start by saying thank you so much for that report. I think it's my favorite Nyrstrand report so far. That was fantastic. Thank you, guys. I know it's a little intimidating. We've got this big table up here in front of you, and you guys did a great job. Thank you so much. And also, I think this is the last annual report. I just want to thank Nyrstrand. I know I speak for the board when I say we have all appreciated that relationship that we have had for these wonderful years. That relationship, as you pointed out, does not end. There are many ways in which the districts will still be working together to make sure that both stay strong. I think I have always considered Nyrstrand a partner of the Faribault Public Schools and not a competition. So we appreciate the wonderful work that you do. Any other questions from board members?
I don't have any question, but I'd just like to make a comment. Even though this is the last official annual report you have to provide, I would hope that you would feel extremely welcome to bring your ambassadors every year and give us the positives that are happening out at Nyrstrand. I'm very familiar with Nyrstrand and the dynamic education that's taking place out there. So Bonnie Jean, and ambassadors, and parents, please come back and give us some good news about Nyrstrand annually. It's real rewarding, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
I was curious about 155. You said that's been fairly stable. Is that your capacity?
Basically, yes, I think we could go 155, 158, if you feel. But for the most part, we are full, and we do have a significant waiting list of kindergarten and some lists of other levels.
Answers my question.
Well, thank you, guys, and a round of applause. Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is Community Comment. As always, we have this time for members of the community to come forward and bring any items that they may want to bring to the board in person at this time. There are, there is a three-minute limit per speaker and a 15-minute limit per topic. With the levy, I feel the need to add one more comment. We have unfortunately had, with the motions running high, some instances of community members coming forward and making disparaging comments, critical comments, about members of the school or staff members of the school district. And that is not allowed. So should anyone venture into those areas of any staff member or any individual up here tonight, I will have to end your comments at that time, and you won't be allowed to speak more. So please respect that. And with that, anyone who would like to come forward to speak at this time, please do so. I always want to be patient, so if you're building up the courage, I'll give you just a little bit more time. All right, well, not seeing anyone come forward, we will move on to the next item in the agenda. That is item number five, the Consent Agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Do we have a second?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the Consent Agenda? All right, hearing none, we need to do a roll call. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
James Wolf.
Aye.
Jerry Robishaw.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jason Ingraham.
Aye.
Deb Davis.
Aye.
Tom Casper.
Aye.
And I, Howard Bodie. So, Mr. Chairman, we have seven-zero.
Motion carries, seven-zero. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item on the agenda is the Curriculum. We have a Curriculum Committee Report. I don't know who's giving that report. Is that Colleen is giving that report? Excellent.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to just update you on the Annual Report of Curriculum Instruction and Student Achievement. This is a report that is required by the state, and it needs board approval. And once it is board-approved, it will go on our district's website to inform parents, obviously, on curriculum instruction and overall student achievement. I just want to give you just a little bit, a brief overview. I'm really not going to spend a lot of times taking each and every page. But it basically is about curriculum, the instruction, and again, the student achievement. On the first page, you're going to see our staff development and our initiatives for our district. As you go further in, you're going to see our overall MCA results, and I see that it gets cut off as we go. It gives us the MCA background. So basically, it tells you what MCAs are. And then it goes into the report in which describes exactly how we score in the testing environment. And so you can see on this graph, it talks about each grade level and our proficiency level compared to the state. There is a follow-up with all the graphs and the charts, so they again show each grade level and each proficiency level. This is again a requirement of this state report. I'm not going to go over each of them in each detail. However, you can see it on the website.
District here refers to a region, or state, district, and then...
Well, there is a district score that encompasses all of our schools within the Faribault School District.
Okay, so that is, district refers to 656 district.
Yes. And then the state, obviously, all of the schools in Minnesota, in the state of Minnesota, that assess at that grade level, which is 3, 4, 5, 8, and up. And then in reading, 10th grade and 11th grade math. And so those are the current proficiency results. Although, as you probably know, the state of Minnesota has designed a new scoring system called the MMR. And that is a scoring system in which we are judged upon our student growth, judged upon the academic achievement gap, which is basically the white students compared to all other students, our proficiency level, and at the high school, our graduation requirements. And basically, for each arena, we get 25 points. High school can score up to 100 points, and the other schools can score up to 75. And I'm excited to let you know that Lincoln and Roosevelt have been designated as a celebration school based upon those results. We've shown an enormous growth, closing the achievement gap and the overall growth of our schools. And so they need to, if they would like to be identified as a celebration school, just have to fill out a report and get chosen by the state. And so that is an honor for our district. The next page is the Faribault School Board's Goals, Mission Statement, Vision, and your goals are embedded in that. And then the follow-up pages are all of the goals for each of our school buildings. And then, of course, the last page, or the next page, is the Testing Calendar for the school year, so our parents are aware of when we're testing and what we're testing on. And it's also a requirement for this report. And you will see the general fund expenditures in the follow-up page. It is also a requirement for this report. And last but not least, all the board members and the administrators of how to contact them. And that is pretty much the overall general report, that you can view it in detail. I didn't want to spend the time talking about each point. It would take me a long time to go through each page of the brochure. So that's the overall brochure. Questions or comments on the brochure?
And just so I understand, this is a report we're required to do for the state this time? And so there's a lot of formatting here that's a requirement by the state to...
Yes, pretty much every component in this is a state requirement, yes. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, so the next item on this agenda is to approve the annual report that is in front of us. I'll entertain a motion in a second and then open it up for discussion. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on this item? As a board, I think we've seen many of these things before, but...
Well, it's not a real question, maybe, but I don't know if some of the arithmetic has to be double-checked, but that's why I asked about the district, what the district represented, because I'm looking at page eight, where we have three schools from, and the district average is listed as the lowest of the three schools rather than an average. So I'm just saying...
Ironically, that is, all the results are taken off the state website. So if you go on the MDE website, you know, I debated whether to make a change. However, I'd have to guess which direction to go. And sometimes MDE, with their state results, yeah, they don't always add out. Tell you that.
I don't quite understand that, but...
And just to be clear, what we're doing here is reporting back to the state the information that they gave to us.
Right. If you go to MDE and you click on Assessment Results, you can see there's each chart for each arena. So yes, that does happen occasionally with the state results. I'm not exactly sure why that is. But it was a conscious decision to put what was on the state and not to take my best guess at where I thought we were, to be honest with you.
I don't have any question about this. I would like to compliment Colleen. We had a curriculum committee meeting that ended shortly before this meeting began, and Colleen had presented an overview of this report to that committee, and it was a part of our discussion about the role and purpose of the curriculum committee. But Colleen did an excellent job of presenting that to us this afternoon.
Any other questions or comments on the second?
Mr. Chair, going through all the charts, we seem to be below state average.
Colleen, would you mind coming up to the mic?
Yes, we have arenas that we will be working on this school year and throughout to continuously improve in this arena. So yes, we do have areas to work in.
Like with No Child Left Behind, there was a goal. Do we have a goal at some future year, or...
Well, No Child Left Behind, they really revamped it this year because the goal for No Child Left Behind is that 100 percent of the students would be performing at grade level and above. And what was determined was that it's rather an unrealistic goal. And so now, the state of Minnesota has gone with a waiver from the U.S. Educational, or Department of Ed, U.S. Department of Ed, thank you, in which, you know, we've changed it and we're trying the MMR route because the true value is that students grow. And that's why they've changed the proficiency level. And so instead of just looking at proficiency, what they really want to make sure is that kids grow at each grade level. And so the state of Minnesota, under a waiver, is trying a new way to look at students. And, you know, part of it, too, is that, you know, you're not comparing apples to apples across districts. And so it's just a different way of looking at things that they think are more effective. And we'll see over time how that turns out. Because 100 percent growth for all students would be an ultimate goal for our district and for every district across, you know, across the nation. However, may not be a realistic goal.
But so we're not going to go for 100 percent at 2018, or how about 90 percent?
This, because of MDE, no longer are they going for the 100 percent. Now, is that in the back of everybody's mind that we want 100 percent of our students to be at grade level? Yes, it is. But MDE has made a change because they did not feel that it was realistic.
Could we, as a district, set that?
We could set that. There are some underlying circumstances that may cause us not to get 100 percent.
How about 90 percent?
We test all students. Well, that would be something that we'd have to sit down as a group and discuss. Where is our district-wide goal? And yes, can that be done? Yeah, it has been done in the past in other districts, yes.
Todd, you have something you want to do?
Yeah, I think that, just correct me if I'm wrong, but I think with the MMR, the thought is that the local district should be making those goals for those achievements and not the federal government. Is that right?
Yeah, there's a component of that, yes.
Okay. So we can make whatever our goal is, as long as everybody agrees with what that local goal is to be? Are there specific guidelines at the federal level that we need to follow?
Basically, the state, they're going to look at all schools, and that's how they're going to determine. They will always find a 10 percent of those priority schools that they're going to work with, those focus schools that they're going to work with. The middle of the ground, they don't label them at all. But then you get to celebration schools, which is the top 25 percent. And then the top 10 percent... and then the top 10% for the reward school. And so there'll still be goals set, set by our state.
But I mean, as far as like the reading and the math and the science goals, are those developed locally?
Those are usually developed locally, yes. And you want to make, you really want to make some realistic goals, because people don't strive for goals, as you know, if they're, they're, they're not realistic. And so we've got to make, we've got to make a realistic goal, but we want enough of a jump that we just keep moving forward. The goal of curriculum would be obviously continuous improvement in this area. And always to stay focused on student achievement, and that's, that's what our goal should be.
I mean, there are goals listed here at the end of this report.
Yes. Those are the building-wide goals. They looked at their MCA results. They talked about what was realistic, where they thought they could move their students to. And so next year, we will, when we get our results, we will look at those goals to see what we have achieved and what we have made. And if we, if we don't achieve and make, what will we be doing differently? And that's what we're currently doing now to take a look at our, at our curriculum area. One thing I can talk about is I know that we're going to be doing some standard alignment, that we have standards that we have to meet and we need to realign. We're going to be looking at some futuristic training and differentiation and other arenas that we, we need to do so that we can keep moving forward and that we can keep achieving. And so that's the result of these current goals.
Could we set a goal in the district, in the board, at least get up to state average?
Well, I can't set that goal, personally, by myself, but the conversation could go to the board as to what, what overall score you would like on your MCA results. Yes, that is doable. It would, it would take some discussion too, just because you want to know your clientele and, and where they're at and where to move them, move them to, to make those realistic goals.
What timeframe, do you think?
What timeframe to?
Get up to at least state average? I mean, I did, this is a tough question.
I think it is a tough question, because I don't know, you know, I don't know, I haven't been here long enough to determine that for starters. And then, second of all, you know, it all depends on the population and how that changes over time. And so there's, there's factors that will affect your results. And so could you make a goal, could you make a goal that this is where you want to be in X amount of years? Yes, you could. I personally should not be making that goal. That should come from a, from a committee group to do that. But yes, it is definitely doable and typically done, yes.
I think it's okay to ask two questions, though. I don't think that that's not necessarily bad.
And I think it would be a great discussion question for the curriculum committee to take up. That's why we have a curriculum committee. I would, I would end on, on the note that I think we can't say loudly enough, when, when you do take all the factors into consideration with the MMR, that we have two of our schools who are well above state average in the top 20% of the state. That is something for all of our schools to be very proud of.
Right, and I really, you know? And that, that is, that is a great achievement, because, you know, that is, that is an arena that is hard to move. And so that, that is, that is a real positive for our district. It is a difficult, difficult thing to move.
Thank you, Colleen. Okay. Next on the agenda, the policy committee. We have some minutes in front of us. We have some policies here for first reading, it says, but I'm not seeing them. Yeah, here we go. So attachment policy 101, legal status of the school district, and policy 306, administrator code of ethics. Deb or anyone else, would you like to say anything about that?
Well, I can talk about them. Just so everyone knows, it was the shortest policy committee meeting ever. We, we just wanted to really stay on task, and Todd and Kathy were both absent, but, you know. Legal status of the school boards, there was just some language changes in the MSBA policy, and we decided that we should adopt those changes. Same with the policy 306, the code of ethics. Basically, there were just some language changes made, recommendations made by MSBA, so we decided to go with those two. The other three policies that we looked at, we actually tabled to get some more information and discuss when Todd was there, so that we could have good information about background checks and opening and closed meetings, and then the distribution of materials to school, on school premises.
So these policies are in front of us for our first reading, so they will come back to us next month for the second reading, at which time we can take action on them. Any other questions about these policies? I'm assuming that these changes that you mentioned will not have an impact on, in any significant way on what we're already doing in the district in terms of carrying out policy?
Correct. They were.
Clarifications and the like?
Correct. Some.
It's just nice to know we have a legal status.
Why did we table or policy 205, Deb?
There were some questions brought up at one of the meetings, and we wanted to get more clarification.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to finance. Start with the finance report, please, James.
Okay, the minutes of the meeting are in your packet. Just one note, I believe the next meeting is going to be November the 13th rather than the 12th, as noted in the minutes.
Yep. That's correct.
So I think that's correct on the future meetings list, too. But it wasn't, that's not, it was noted in the minutes, so I just wanted to make sure there's no confusion. With that, I'd recommend the board motion to approve these at this time, correct?
No.
We don't, the committee does that. Okay, then there are two items for approval, and the first one is?
It's a middle school obvious coordinator planner position.
Right. That's a specially funded position, as I recall. Colleen Murdestoff, do you want to speak to that or no?
It's a, it's through a grant. It's the obvious program. There's a coordinator, there's a dollar amount for a coordinator that we can put into that, and that dollar amount will pay for the coordinator for this bullying program that we have implemented at the middle school.
Right, so it's not general fund dollars that are being?
Nope, it's strictly a grant.
Okay. So the finance committee recommends approval for that?
I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
In a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve middle school obvious coordinator planner position funded by a grant. Any questions or comments on this item?
I just point out, it's Jeremiah's Hope that is funding the $1,000 stipend for the position, just so you know.
Remind us again, what, what is Jeremiah's Hope? Where does that come from?
That, I believe, is from the Columbine piece, and Jeremiah's Hope is the fundraiser, it's not a fundraiser, it's the dollars that have been generated as a result of that bullying.
All right, any further questions? We have a motion in a second, if I'm correct, and so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the bid by Cybex for fitness equipment in the H. Roberts-Spielitz Fitness Center in the amount of $131,282.15.
Move approval?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this, Todd?
It was a sole bid. We expected that, but, and is not being funded by the general fund. It's by the Fairbowl Booster Club.
Booster Club will be handling this. It's part of the addition to the, to the high school for the fitness center, which we are extraordinarily thankful for all the hard work that the Booster Club has put into. And so we thank you for not just this, but the whole, the entire project, which has been enormous in scope and I think will also have an enormous impact on our students.
Can we move to hold a school board meeting at the fitness center and then do the routine?
No, I think we cannot do that.
That's a, Nicole, that's a wellness idea for the district-wide.
School board meetings will not take place at the fitness center.
Just a quick question.
I've seen some of the equipment, and it's, what I've seen's all got the Fairbowl logo on it. And there's some real nice new safety features on the new equipment, so it's, it's first-class equipment, the way it looks today.
Absolutely. It's top-notch stuff, so it'll be a wonderful addition for our district.
You should take a tour when it's finished.
Yeah, as a board, I think it would be great for us to take a tour. I'm not going to work out during the meeting, but, but a tour would be wonderful. Any other questions or comments on the site? Hearing none, but knowing that I would personally like to make sure my voice is known on this one, let's, let's do a roll call.
All right, there we go. State vote for voting, no?
What was that?
Want to state the motion.
So the motion is, it's item 8B2, approval of the bid by Cybex for fitness equipment in the H. R. Roberts-Spielitz Fitness Center in the amount of $131,282.15.
Okay. James Wolf?
Aye.
Jerry Oberschuh?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jason Ingber?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
And Howard Bodie is an aye, and Mr. Chairman, it passes 7-0.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you all very much. Thanks again. I cannot say it enough times to the Booster Club for all the hard work that's been done. All right. Next item on the agenda is, on the budget, we have the enrollment report.
Well, you don't have it there.
I was going to say you don't have it there, Cole.
But we knew about that in advance, and so I'm told Colleen Murdestoff is ready to record. I don't know, I was just told that. I really was.
I looked at it. Do you have, yeah, we put the wrong attachment on there. Do you have some numbers for us?
I don't have numbers.
Did we have on the finance committee?
I can tell you.
Yeah, general speaking.
Sorry, the minutes don't reflect the actual numbers, the finance committee minutes, but I can tell you that we are ahead of projections. But I don't know by how much, so we are looking pretty good for October 1. And just to remind you that the October 1 count that we take in the buildings on October 1 is not the official MDE or the Department of Education October 1 count, but it's very close. And that's the one that we really use for projections and for some of our financial aid, so we're looking, looking good this year. Ahead of projections.
Thank you.
I'll send that out to you tomorrow, so you have it.
That'll be wonderful. Thank you, Colleen.
I've got it.
Okay, Kathy will get it, too.
I'll send it as an email attachment.
Any, any other questions on that item? We have no financial report tonight. Gifts and donations? Do we have some?
Yes, several.
There we go. I just went to the bottom of the page. So we have a number of gifts tonight, number one, from donorschoose.org. Classroom project resources donated to Joe Pinka, Jefferson first-grade teacher for the Right Stuff Project with a value of $144.77. A donation from the Ball Foundation for $1,200 to the Author Illustrator Program, Year of the Reader. A donation from the Fairbowl Lions Club with the distribution of dignities to all third-grade students in the Fairbowl Public Schools on September 11, 2012. Related, Fairbowl Booster Club, I'm sorry, a different thing, Fairbowl Booster Club in the amount of $20,537.90. A donation for another fitness center equipment order. Another donation for fitness center equipment order in the amount of $6,953.55, again, from the Booster Club. From the Fairbowl Emeralds, $1,500, a donation to provide additional coaching services. And from MRG Tool and Dye to, for Mr. Rod Gramsey, the owner, the sharpening of shear blades for sheet metal shear used in the high school metal shop, and repairing two parts of a woodshop saw with a value of $300, so 350. So with that, it's, it's wonderful to see so many members of the community stepping forward to help the various programs in our schools. So we thank all of those who have taken the time to, to find out the needs in our classrooms and in our programs and to help us fill those needs. So we appreciate that, and on the behalf of the board, I say thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve in a second.
So move.
We have a motion in a second to approve. Any questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Other committee reports. Is there a report from the insurance committee? It doesn't say no report, so.
There's a?
We don't have a presenter, but we do have a report.
Right, there's minutes in there for, from the insurance committee.
Any question on these minutes before we move on? Hearing none. We have no report from the wellness committee, from a community ed report, Ann Marie.
Hi, I have the Early Childhood Family Education Report. I believe we've all got that handout. Okay, great. And before I talk about that, I'm going to just let you guys read that yourself. But overall, community ed is going really well. There seems to be grant opportunities that are presenting themselves. There's lots of community program committees that are being formed. But when I come before you, I'm just going to be trying to highlight a program each time. Last time I talked about 21st Century Youth Development. This time we'll talk about Early Childhood Family Education. And just some things that are in this report that I believe should be highlighted is, as you know, that program serves 0 to 5 years old. It is helping parents become the child's first teacher, which is so important. Early Childhood is located at McKinley. They are enrolling 175 students this year, which is great. They have things like, activities like open gym times, gingerbread house making, McKinley Carnival, in addition to all of their classes and parenting classes and child development classes. I believe that Superintendent Sesker went to the carnival this year?
I did. I wasn't part of it, but I did go.
Okay, okay, great. That's great. Just in terms of the highlights done at the bottom of your first page, Judy Covert, who is the coordinator for that program, wanted to make sure that you knew that Baby Stop is one of their signature programs. It's for newborn babies, and parents come. There's a parent educator, a public health nurse, a consultant from District 1 Hospital. And that is where they are able to weigh their babies, interact with other parents. So they really are having that community and partner opportunity to talk about their newborn babies, so it's great. There is a parent advisory council attached to ECFE, which is wonderful. That's what community education's all about, is getting the community involved in more advisory boards for all of our programs. And I just wanted to point out that last back page is all of the different classes. So with that, just wanted to highlight ECFE, and I'll be highlighting another program next time I'm up.
Any questions for Ann Marie? Thank you, Ann. Now we move on to other matters. First is the approval of the Fairbowl High School Spanish Department trip to Costa Rica for spring break 2013.
Good evening. I am Barb Sorom. I'm here on behalf of Julie Peterson and myself, the Spanish Department. And we are getting ready for our next trip. We've done two to Spain and one to Costa Rica, and now we're planning for the next one to Costa Rica. That is actually for spring 2014. We're getting started really early so that we can get all the planning in. And so I'm looking for endorsement from the board for that trip. The purpose is to enable the students to experience firsthand the culture, which includes people, food, geography, music, all of that, and the language, basic conversation with host families, guides, children, and in the communities of Costa Rica. We chose Costa Rica because, over Spain, it was kind of a tough decision, a toss-up, but it came down to cost, and it's about $1,000 cheaper to go to Costa Rica, so we said, let's stay with that. And we are staying with Interact Travel. We changed to them for the last trip, and we had a great time. And we are staying with Interact Travel, we changed to them for the last trip, and we had a great time, no flight delays. Thought we were cursed forever, but it was perfect, everything went as planned, and the company, which is a local Midwest company, paired us with schools from Superior and from Iowa, and so, local, we met them right in Minneapolis at the airport and started bonding with that group. Interact offers a few nights of homestay family time, which we liked, and they do a humanitarian aid project, so last time we went to an elementary school and actually sanded down old desks and painted them and painted some of the walls outside. And then we brought school supplies, so we like the component of the travel and the tours with the humanitarian aid, and then with a little bit of homestay, so they really get to know how a family would live. So everything is included in the cost, it's about twenty-two hundred, and we're in on the super early bird registration cost if we register by January. So, I guess I'll open it to any questions.
Any questions?
Couple of questions, how many students are we talking about, potentially?
Well, it's right around fifteen, we had, I mean, we'll go more, we have, for every six, an adult can go, so we're looking for twelve. So that Julie Peterson and I would both go, and then we'll see, it grows a little bit every year, I think it's starting to be known that there is a Spanish trip every other year, so.
And fundraising?
Fundraising is always an issue, and we kind of leave it up to each group a little bit, we're trying to look at independent type things where each student could go out and do something, if parents are willing to help lead that, that's great. Students are really, really busy, and the payment has to be made, we really only have, by the time they register, a good year because then the payment has to be in, and so, yeah, we're, we'll have to kind of see what group we have. We do say, okay, now you know well in advance, you know, ask for money at Christmas, a lot of them have jobs, we haven't had a lot of luck with fundraising, but there are some things that independently they can do, and if parents wanna get involved, we're willing to do that, too.
So what you're saying is that right now you have no plans for fundraising?
Um, we have small plans for fundraising, and we've done it in the past with EF tours, we had to raise money for the tips, for the guides and the tour bus, the bus drivers, and we had a really hard time, we did, we tried to do some fundraising, and when you put how many kids participate, the amount of money that's earned, the time put into it, it's just, they would get like ten dollars, so.
So are there scholarships available for students who cannot afford this?
We don't, but I actually, I'm glad you said that, because I was forgetting, that last time I wanted to look into that, and I think we're early enough that if I get started on that this fall, we maybe could put together one for, of our own here.
Okay, I do have some concerns that if you don't have some options available for families who can't afford this great experience, that would really shortchange some of our students who may be enrolled in a Spanish class and should be afforded that opportunity through fundraising or scholarships or some option that would be available for those families who cannot afford it. So, before I can vote on this, I'd like to know a little bit more about how you're gonna address those students who don't have the financial wherewithal to pay twenty-two hundred dollars, even two thousand dollars.
I do know of a, a few fundraisers in town that students can do on their own, that doesn't need full organization, that if they wanna take the initiative, they can do that just on their own. And we also get a little bit of money back if they put a little blurb in that, it's not a ton, but every little bit helps. Every time we meet a payment time, we get a certain amount, they call it realea points, but I can have that put towards the student costs. And with the super early bird registration, they actually triple that for the first payment, and so about three, three or four times throughout the payment process, as long as we're getting all the students paying on time, and we have everything, our paperwork in order, they give some money back.
I just have one more question, Mr. Chair, does a travel agent supplement any adults that go along in this?